...at a school board trustees meeting to order. Mr. Markowski, please note that all the board members except Theresa Perkins are present. If you will, please stand with me and say the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The first item would be the approval of the agenda board on movement. We approve the agenda as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Obstaining? The next would be the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. And I'm moving to approve these, but I have a second, please. Thank you, Ms. Hudson. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
There is she is.
No singing at this point. I don't think we can do it. I had a rough lunch. Phil has four, there's only four. Alright, you're okay, Ms. Perkins.
Please reflect and truth Perkins is saying.
But you're...
Not here.
The next item would be public comments. I don't think we have any at this time. We will move to goal strategy, student achievement, and of course budget. Wonderful talent, Ms. Rivera. Nice to see you.
Good to see you, Ms. President. Respect numbers of the board. Hope you're having a great evening. She's under respect. You're always respected. I have much changes here. I'm going to quickly go through this and I have some more screen because we have some other business in order to talk about tonight. For your five major funds that are related to the budget, we are nearing the end of the first quarter. Nothing significant that they do for state reporting at this point, but it is a milestone of monitoring. You can clearly see when your education fund different from last year. Last year was your first year without T W. This is real comparisons month by month now. So you have $9.8 billion dollars at the end of February in operations fund. Remember, reminding you that funds that are housed in education fund are transferred June and July into the operations. But based on how the district operates now more efficiently, you can clearly see that last year without a T W, we had $5.8 billion. So you are doing much better. Operations, 1.4 for each year, which is usual because you have your tax collections in June and December. Your debt service and pension fund, those funds are just carried cash there for the end of the term of your debt. And then your remuneration is at 4.980 and last year at 3.599. Any questions on that? If not hearing, Mr. President, may I move on to the trade partners fund?
Please.
So we went through the first top five. One of the areas that I kind of want to focus your eyes on, if you see that fund there that says bond reimbursements, O seven two one. We are progressing along on our next project that the board has approved for the Parkwood, J H S pool, and other activities that we can develop in the district. We are forging forward until we get our funds. Do you know that process? I was going to you, when we get to that point, we don't let production stop. You are in a position now where you can pay for those expenses and get reimbursed as our bond council always presents those resolutions to allow us to do so. So we're forging forward on that. I was just so you're aware of that. I also want you to focus on the school lunch fund. At the end of February, $2.4 million. I have been discussing that $600,000 will be contributed towards the project at North Haven because we are working on reseating an area of a cafeteria which qualifies as cafeteria with work being done, expanding, getting rid of that stage which Christ and Coral will be presenting information to you. However, we today with, not relating food service, the equipment does need to be updated there as well as we're wanting to see construction wise. If the team that usually does our updates on our cafeteria, the kitchen area, can handle a second serving line. So we're investigating that. So it will be more than $600,000. Remember, when we get to the food service, I will let you know how much money. Sure, lots, good luck with that. Those are the highlights that I wanted to bring to your attention here on this progress tonight. Any questions? I think what you do see here, most of your funds are in the red. Are you reimbursables? Here and now, we'll move to the bonds. We're working through our bonds diligently. Some of the money that is remaining in these bonds will go towards our current construction projects if needed. A lot of F F A, which is your furniture, fixtures, and equipment, probably hitting that. So some of these will be dropped in October, 2017. It is for CMS, N E S, and River Valley. For the two middle schools, we will be using this, these funds to contribute towards the renovation on CMS. They do want initial painting than what throughout the rest of the building. So we're going to accommodate that through the... The other thing in the series 22, we met with the sequel team. We know that we started this adventure quite a while, but we only borrowed a certain amount of money because we don't need it all right now. And as time has shown, the increase in price of products has increased substantially on top of the fact that we have to accommodate the size of enrollment and we're just getting at these elementary schools. So we will be adding to that, and that will be coming down the line by resolution. That Tree, Thomas Peterson, will present that to you when it's time to do that. Is there any question there? Tonight we'll do a presentation on 21 projects, and Miss Kathy, those. You're only done with your two, bud. So Dex Shire will be meeting with that team to, they've done a, the initial plan just the things that are obvious, they have a chance to take care of certain things. And he'll be going through the actual plan just to say, there's the absolutes. That should be coming within two to three weeks, within the month we have reported. Any questions there? Finally, your food service account. If we look at the bottom where it's highlighted, okay, you allow the cash this year, allow to keep on hand based on three months' average expenses, which I take a look at the 12-month totality because of the different timeframes. You tend to spend less money in the summer than you do in the school type. So I average your three months over 12-month period. You're allowed to spend over $1.2 million. I feel very confident that we'll be able to get the additional equipment. And if the building allows that structurally, to put it in another serving line, we put it in a second serving line, so we want to be able to start handling those kind of things within our buildings. Incidentally, she will, she'll be meeting with the architect team and the core team on the cafeteria in the two new elementaries. We'd also be having our weekly construction update where we're... This time now that we get our tech team to start planning all of that on data tables and the equipment that they need all in their stats. The part that starts to get to be a little bit expensive, and we know that. And so we want to make sure that we can accommodate that as well. But if there's any, no other questions, move on. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The next item would be the core construction presentation.
And Jamie.
And Jamie Layton.
Well, uh... Thank you all for having us. Have a fine day. It's my day. I stopped at coffee crossing over Ridge, and they didn't have pie, so I'm sorry. But yeah, thank you for having us today. And we're going to go through as quickly as we can. We have 39 slides. So it's a lot, but we're going to cover it very quickly. We're going to talk about year one facility projects and year two facility projects today, which are respectively 2021, 2022, but continuing on through the course of 2025 in terms of projects. So first of all, thank you to our partners, both Jamie here as well as Perfection's in the room and all of our engineering partners. We can't do it without them. We're so grateful for all their work on these projects. Your name, my... Quicker this guy. And also, this list, I definitely, this list is growing. This is our subcontractor trade partners list. We call them trade partners at Core because we believe that partnership is a big part of the game, and we want their buy-in from day one. We don't want it to be contentious. And these are a smattering of the trade partners that are involved on the project so far. This is going to get bigger and bigger and bigger just because the nature of all the work that's being done in the district and all the partners that are involved. Steve, I have to have this. We'll get you in the house. So I just wanted to point out, and another big thank you is that on February 8th, we held what we call Start Safety Training. We had over 25 local subcontractor leadership show up, and that was an amazing opportunity to talk about the culture of safety that we held very high. And it was just really great to have that many local leaders come to the event, participate, and actually engage in it, and it was a great opportunity. Our culture of safety has continued, and these projects have continued to stay safe, and it's a huge part of the partnerships of the local trade partners here. So let's do a quick overview again of the projects here at Greater Clark's. We've got all the way up to New Washington High School, Middle High School, Charleston Middle School, and River Valley Middle School. Jeff Hyde and Tiss Complex Riverside and North Haven Elementary will do the additions and renovations. And we'll go through them briefly, but I wanted to talk about the schedule real quick. Jeff Hyde was split into two bid packages, the tennis courts, and then the second bid package was done for the tennis building. We bid those out in the spring. If you've driven around Jeff, you've seen the new tennis building going in. And we're expecting to be done with those by the beginning of summer. As far as Riverside Elementary, that will be done by the end of the spring season, just the two additions on the back of Riverside. New Washington, we took bids after the last update and got started, and there's a little bit of work going on. That's going to have to be phased around the athletic program now in New Wash. It might look longer than what maybe it needs to be, but it's just, we're trying to make sure that the kids can play their sports at New Washington. So that'll be done before beginning of school year next year. North Haven, we just received our bids over winter break and have started out there as well. And we were expecting to be done with that by October. And then the River Valley, Charleston, we're going to talk about the plans a little bit for that because we're receiving bids this coming month at both of those schools, and expect to be done by the end of the actual year, not the school year, with all of the work for year one. So by the end of this year, we're looking at year one is over. We did, alright. So we haven't done yet. So let's go into some progress photos. So this is Jeff Hyde. You can see that we're working on the tennis building. It's going up. It's going well. The tennis courts are all completed. The lighting's done. The fitting's done. The bleachers are done. The concrete pads are done. Concrete sidewalks are done. The only thing left on the tennis courts is the, is the actual coating that goes on the top, and then the painting, the stricking, and finished work, which we'll see done, like I said, towards the end of spring. The weather is the most advantageous for that. As far as the building itself, you see we have the main building pretty much framed up, and then there will be a canopy that goes around the outside. But it's going well, and it's on schedule as far as everything goes there. So this is what it's going to look like when it's all completed. These are renderings that Jamie has given us. It's going to look just fantastic. Jeff red, and I think it's going to be a great facility for those students out there. Yeah, yeah, we're starting roofing today. That's right. Alright, so North Haven, I'm sorry, Riverside. This is the two additions off the back. You can see how the roof line continues off the parts of the north... Alright, I can't say that. Riverside Elementary, we're going to, we've seen progress to the point where the outside exterior is almost completed. Brick is done. The roofing is nearly completed. And so the exterior is complete. When we go inside, you see interior walls are going up, brick walls, as well as the HVAC plumbing. And it won't be long before we start, when we're drying in, we're going to have, this is going to go really quick, all the interior finishes, drop ceiling, and all the spaces for the students for that kindergarten and, and it's pre-K. 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 So it's going to be a really awesome addition there. At New Wash, we've got a lot going on, or will be going on through this spring season. Obviously, a lot of sports. We've got to work around those, but you see all the things on here. So we've got track and field renovations. We've got the tennis courts that are going to be going in, dugouts, and then kind of the capstone is the new baseball and softball hitting facility that's going in. As far as progress on that, we just kind of got started. David Cusiani was out there excavating recently, and so we have here the excavation of where that facility is going to sit. If you see kind of where that ground was. It won't be long, your seat footings, foundations, and then the exterior shell will go up. Probably by the next time we have one of these updates, that facility will be pretty close to be done. It'll real quick. Alright, so, and then this is Jamie's wonderful graphics that we're going to be putting on all the buildings. It's going to look awesome, having all of this tied into the campus. And no one's going to wonder, who's the president? It must be. It's going to be awesome. So I'm going to kind of hand it over, well, actually, first I'm going to talk about North Haven, but then I'm going to hand it over to Jamie so you can talk about some of the design stuff. But North Haven, there's a lot going to happen. And you see here, we're expecting new gym addition. We're going to see a new corridor at the back. But then there's also, we're going to be removing the existing gym, demoing it, and turning it into kindergarten classrooms, as well as general renovation to other places. The cafeteria would be one of the critical ones. So inside, this is just really recent. We've got asbestos abatement. And then we're working on the demolition now of the existing gym and stage area inside North Haven. And again, this is just really the very beginning. So I don't know if you want to talk about some of the renderings, Jamie, that we have here.
Yeah, this is just a new gym addition, coming off of the side parking lot. And so you see the north classroom addition to the far left of the rendering that was done very recently in the last project, and then the jail road stand at that facility as well. So here again, you can see the major additions, gym, and restrooms, and lobby, and then everything else is interior renovation, pretty much were included into the existing gym and cafeteria spaces.
Yeah, it's going to have a great feel to it with the graphics and the color scheme as well, and the interior as well.
Yeah, I feel this will help the branding of the building and extend the feeling of the pride of the school.
Alright, I'll let you talk a little bit about Charleston, kind of the scope and the project here.
Yeah, these are pretty small, but basically by color coding, you can see the yellow is the gym. This is the first floor. So the yellow area is the gym. We're going to get a new gym floor, paint the gym, walls, ceilings, basically freshen that space up, give it a whole new life, and remove the target floor and the memory floor that's in there now, and the booster place and all the flooring situation there now. Put a new gym wood floor in. So the gym will be basically going to be a complete refresher. What you see there in green are basically restroom renovations throughout the facility. All the restrooms are pretty much original to these facilities at the middle schools. So they are overdue for a renovation, so they'll get a complete renovation. The pink areas are office spaces. That's secondary guidance office area in the middle there, and staff support on the other side of it there. Those are just going to get finishes. Those were not done in the last renovation. So new carpeting, paint, and some new ceilings and those type of things. The blue area is what Super Titan calls is the orange space that he wants to have. And I tried to find new orange shag carpet to put the rest of the building in the patch, but we're going to fill all the other carpet and freshen all that space up. That's all the fine arts areas, abandoned choir, so that will all get renovated as well. And then going up to the second floor, just the upper area of the gym. We have an upper mezzanine, upper gym space, so that will get part of the paint and so forth. And then the upper floor restroom renovations as well, and staff restroom as well. River Valley's almost the exact same work with the exception of where we worked in the pool and locker room area. So again, the yellow is the gym, same work I mentioned at Charleston Middle School. The green throughout the building are the major restroom cores that are all being renovated. You can see they're in the pairs. River Valley's a slightly larger building than Charleston, so there's a few more restroom pairs there. What you're seeing in the top of the plan here is, the pink here is the new office space. We're going to take the existing gym space, and we're going to make a new main office. They're going to then vacate the existing offices and expand guidance and support and counseling into those spaces as is. Those spaces will just remain as is. So we'll be able to transfer over as those spaces become complete. In addition to the office space, what you see there in the light blue, those are three large flex stem steam labs for the building. So I think the principal's going to dedicate one of those to sixth grade science, and the other two will be an undedicated steam, science, technology, engineering, art, math, just a flex lab. So nice, large space. And then between the gym and those blue classrooms, as you see a spattering of colors there, basically what we're doing is we're taking the entire locker room space. That's there now. It's original to the building. It's, to say it's in need of renovation is a dire understatement. What we're going to do there is we're going to renovate the locker rooms to support today's activities that we need. And we're also going to vacate too the locker rooms and expand restroom facilities that are desperately needed for events in that building. And then the next slide is just upstairs, again, the upper gym area. And then we're renovating two restroom pairs that are upstairs, and we're going to correct a closed corridor condition that we're going to be able to open up with this renovation as well.
From the standpoint of that actual scope work, these two might seem similar, but this one is more significant in terms of scope, and will take a little bit longer. But our plan is to try and work around school schedules as much as possible, and so, and impact the schools as little as possible so that, you know, when we're working on these, we're going to do a lot of summer renovations and break renovations. But this one in particular is going to take the full, I mean, the full time that we've slated on that schedule for sure. So, alright, year two. See, we're going quick. You guys are all ready. We're already at slide 25. So a separate set of partners, but some are similar. We've added some new faces. Thank you again to the Jamie and Perfection who are in the room. But all of our teammates are, A M L is our general contractor teammate, Core, on these year two projects. And then we also have Ratio, P D Design involved, and then their engineering team. Fantastic work with so far. And just adding to the, sort of the map here, you see the new, I like to call them brand spanking new, Charleston Elementary and Pike Elementary. These are going to be amazing facilities that we just cannot wait to get started on. So I'm adding those to sort of the long-term schedule here so you can kind of take a look and see where everything's going to line up in terms of projects. And we see here that we're going to be actually getting early bid packages for site and simple next month, believe it or not. We're ready to go. From that standpoint, complete design is going to be done in May on both facilities. And we're going to stagger the bids in order to generate more competitiveness on Pike Elementary and get both of these started in June. And you're going to see that construction durations are pretty similar, but realistically, we're expected to be done in the spring of '25. And that leaves a little bit of buffer for all of the movement that's going to take to get these students, all these teachers in, get all the fixture, furniture, equipment in, all the technology in. I mean, it's going to be a massive undertaking. We'll assist with that process. And then we'll cut that ribbon, first day of school around that time. And it's going to be a great opportunity. The other one I added in here is Charleston High School's locker room, which is also in blue. I could not put it in red. I just, I couldn't bring myself to do it. I'm sorry. Yeah, I couldn't do it. So there's three blues, and you know, my A T P is kicking in. But I wanted to share that because that is co-insiding. We're collecting bids again this next month for that, and we are expecting to start right there in the spring. Make sure that we're getting done by the end of the year. We were working towards getting done by football season, and I just, we don't want to promise that to you. We're going to work as hard as we can to get it done, but more than likely, it's going to go through football season this year just given the sort of restart of this project and the back, the history of it. I want to move into here, and we'll show you the prettiness and the pictures and let Jamie elaborate.
Yeah, I don't want to go into too much detail. You've seen these before, but these are just the latest renderings of this one, particularly and specifically the New Charleston Elementary School and the new Jeff Pike Elementary School. They're incredibly similar as their sister school designs. So this is just the main entrance coming in with the academic wings to the side. Again, the main entrance in the center, the academic wings to the side. And you know, this is a large facility, but it is designed to schools within a school. So we have the primary side of the building and the other side of the building. And you can see each one of those wings is a grade level. So for the most part, a student, other than to go to some shared spaces like art and music and gym and cafeteria and library, those type of things, they don't need to leave their, their house, so to speak, within the building. So it's a large facility, but it's broken down into smaller homes within it. So color, color is just corresponding every grade level and use of space and working out.
You all have this as your packet, so we don't need to go into too great detail. You've, you've been involved on this. I mean, this is a long time coming.
The only real difference between the Charleston Pike Elementary is the section. So one lasts grade level at Pikeville, and then we've added preschool at both facilities as well.
I absolutely love the idea that our architect partners came up with a graduation within your elementary education from, you know, the undergrades to the upper grades and being able to walk up the stairs and being, you know, trying to graduate within your elementary education. I think that's going to be an exciting opportunity for those students. And as you said, school and the school is how we made it, how they made it. So in terms of, you know, kind of what's coming up next for this, next week, we're holding a trade partner, their meet and greet. There's been some concern, just given the number of people that have signed up, whether the Rusty Bucket will hold all those people. But I think it's going to go as you please, and so we're expecting that we'll have at least enough food. So anybody who wants to come and talk about the project, please come out. But we're expecting over 100 people who have already RSVP'd. You know, we've created, through working down here, we've created a lot of relationships. We're not concerned about the number of bids we get. It's more about making sure that people are excited and getting people excited about the project. And that goes all the way to the trade partners and contractors locally here. So we're going to be doing that. And then also, make exciting stuff. Look for a groundbreaking invitation in May is what we're hoping to get to. So I'll be working with the district here shortly to talk about the details, but we would love everyone to come out. We're going to make it as big and grand as possible because these are a big deal for a district who hasn't done a new building since Franklin Square. I mean, but even then, it was, you know, it was a new building for a long time. These are going to be an important, an important part of the community for a long time. So we want to make it something special. And year point five, I want to put a question mark. Is it year point five, Mark? I don't know.
Yeah, we call it that.
Okay, sounds good. So Charleston High School is underway, like I said before, our partners, K. Howick. We're working for design, just a quick overview. These are black and white. We couldn't get the color in there. But it will be Charleston blue. But it will be Charleston blue with metal, just like at Charleston High School. You're gonna see it in the bricklay, similar color as Charleston, including those columns that are iconic to Charleston as well. Really serviced it well. You see here the locker room space for the football team. The restrooms down below to the right. You see the locker room for the soccer track to the left. And then ultimately, a lot of storage, which is important. But then we're gonna have that concession stand down to the left as well, under a conning for people to stand in line. So it's gonna be a great facility to add out there at Charleston, really complete how we feel that, you know, that area should look. I think it's gonna be really exciting. And the final thing, and I'm sorry, Brian, I didn't get this in. I was at New Washington today, but Renee has these really tight headlines. So, we, Core was representing Greater Clark out of the career fair this last month. And I gotta tell you, it was a really exciting opportunity to meet these students and talk about their facilities. First of all, we brought some graphics and they were very excited about it. And then being able to take the next step and engage them in their conversation about their futures. And we've had over eighty students sign up to learn more about construction industry, architecture industry, and engineering industry at all three schools. And there's a lot of interest out there. Of course, I told JV about the architects and we're gonna get him engaged with them. But, you know, with the new faces in the room, we definitely want all of us need to work together towards new people in the construction industry as an opportunity for some of these students. And so there was a report recently that said that we're down five hundred and fifty thousand construction workers right now. And so anybody and everybody needs to be engaging in that and making sure we're working forward to get us back on track with that. So anyway, I just wanna share that. And I think that's it. And what's my time, Renee?
You did good.
Okay. Thank you all very much. You have any questions for us while we're up here? Thank you all.
Alright, thank you very much. Next item would be the consent agenda. Would I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? I must approve. Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson. I know everybody did their homework. Is there any questions, comments, concerns you'd like to discuss? Here we go. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and abstaining. Alright, the next would be the wonderful gift to building. Frank, Freeman, would you help us with this, please?
Absolutely. We can see this big ticket item, Charleston Elementary School, the Jeffersonville F O P bottom one, we're donating for eighth graders to take a trip to Washington, D.C. I will actually be going on that trip, so, so excited.
Put one of those in straight on your key.
Yeah, I told him, I said, I'm tired of you. They said it was a bad idea. And I was like, no, I'm not tired of you, I just hung out. Swim teams for New Washington Little Hyatt, the Greater North Clark Healthcare Foundation's, two thousand four hundred ninety-seven dollars, eighty-four cents. And the GCC Education Foundation Summer Community Program for Wilson Elementary and PTO also pushing on that. That's going to be amazing. I would like we accept these gifts to buildings, the amount of ten thousand nine hundred seventy and seventeen dollars.
Awesome. Thank you so much and thanks to all. We're involved. Do I have a second, Lord?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Do I have any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, or abstaining. Now we're into the action items. Hello there, people, government.
Good evening.
How are we today?
I'm doing well, thank you. Last, Frank, Greater Clark authorized us to join an evaluation against Jewel Lashine. And this was four damages suffered by school districts and students as a result of the manufacturer marketing sale and use of these cigarettes and baby products. Just a couple months ago, on December sixth, a settlement was reached between our school districts and Jewel Lashine. Greater Clark is eligible to receive a net settlement amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars approximately. The first half of that will be paid in the fall of this year, two thousand twenty-three. And the settlement funds will be used to purchase and install Halo devices in our school restrooms. Halo devices detect fake smoke and THC and also sound abnormality, like gunshot and shouting, things that we normally would get out in areas with cameras, but obviously we don't have cameras in our schools. We're authorizing the board, asking the board to authorize us to settle with Jewel Lashine.
Lord, do I have a motion for the approval of the settlement against Jewel Lashine? Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Mustang. With the money that we're gonna purchase, just any question, comments? I know, Mr. Law, for we do have of those devices, the restrooms, we have those other schools as well, correct?
Yes.
Any motion, well?
Actually, Officer Mitchell can give you a little insight on how many, because we have some Jeff Pike currently, and how many texts he gets, you know.
We have five in the bathroom now. So we probably get about, I don't know, fifty extra days.
No kidding. Wow, that'd be a lot of girlfriends, one another. I'll say, no, I'm sorry, I couldn't help myself. It just, but yeah.
But the goal will be to put one in every bathroom at the secondary level, middle schools, high schools, and get one in every bathroom that we have, especially as part of these renovations that we're doing to go ahead and try to get that done. I think they're, JV, what are they, twenty-five hundred dollars a piece, something like that?
Yeah, a certain ratio.
Yeah. But the technology is really great.
Yeah. Who gets those stats, besides the research officer?
Administrators, principals.
They can chat about whoever receives it.
Okay.
That's great.
They have smart devices so they can be programmed. They detect all kinds of, basically, or detalents like that. So they, you know, we're seeing two type issues, so.
Well, and the noise, you know, too, for commotion and safety, that's great.
But the research I've done, the schools that have been using them for a couple of years, they've said that, you know, the bank incidents have gone down anywhere from seventy to eighty percent. You know, and that, you know, that. So that would be a good thing right there.
Sure, they put Jewel out of business. Heck, yeah. At any rate, alright. All those in favor of the approval of the settlement agreement against Jewel Lashine? I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Alright, next would be the CMC selection at New Parkwood Elementary School.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Members of the board and of the public tonight, I come to you very excited because this is a representation of the league that Greater Clark has now established here. We received five bids from very fabulous companies throughout the state of Indiana who wants to work for Greater Clark with their whole heart. So we had to painstakingly, as an evaluation team, evaluate them February twenty-third and narrow down to three numbers. If I could tell you, I know each one personally and professionally. And I get sense of the struggle that I knew I was personally gonna have, professionally gonna have, with the team. That is where we benefited ourselves too. They have come and they have delivered all three. One that you have just been presenting to in front of tonight. And the other two are in the room tonight. So I'm going to respectfully request that the board consider the recommendation on behalf of the evaluation team to award a contract to the CMC for Parkwood, which we had with. Prior to that, I think it's important that I learned tonight that that evening, during their presentation, they became aware that they received an award for project of the year, which there are associations in the state that do that for Washington Township Schools. So I wanted to make sure that she knew that we were not selecting anybody who hasn't done things. Very reputable, the superintendent that is on that job will be the superintendent for Greater Clark. So Hagman comes with a plethora of respect, a lot of reference. I did check that personally myself, walking into this district three years ago. I was very aware of Hagman and their recommendations by some highly regarded partners that I've used before. So it is with my great pleasure to present this to you in respectful request as you consider this approval tonight. Upon approval tonight, that will also be authorization for them to start the pre-planning and the pre-construction phase for Parkwood Elementary. In the April meeting, it will actually bring you a agreement with me to have you let approve those. But to say that this was settled, I fear it does not. I mean, we have got some of the biggest hitters, the top three in the state of Indiana, so it's not a concern. And once Park says the number one school district, it's on the move always. So I am recommending Hagman to be your CMC service provider for Parkwood Elementary School.
Thank you. Lord, do I have a motion for the recommendation of Hagman Incorporated Incorporated CMC Services to be the provider for the new Parkwood Elementary School?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Ms. Mustang, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Any questions or comments?
I would just like to say that I deeply appreciate and respect all those that participated in this process. And I know it was a painstaking process and I appreciate all parties involved.
Yeah, I appreciate you appreciating, trust me. You wanna talk about a beating. But anyway, that's great, that's great. Okay, all those in favor of Hagman Incorporated for CMC Service Provider for Parkwood Elementary, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining.
Please join in welcoming Hagman to the recital.
Sure. You sure you don't wanna say a little something?
You wore us out in the interview process.
Well, thank you all very much.
Thank you. Alright, the next item would be the CMC selection for the natatorium in Jefferson High School.
So now at this point, you've got experience with some elementary renovations, building, other building. Now we're embarking on something that is spectacular for Jeffersonville area, something that is bragging, something that's not gonna be anything of its kind. I mean, we are going to be number one in this. And who better than the most qualified one in the state of Indiana, who I also professionally, personally know. And have seen their work throughout my thirty years of my career plus. I'm gonna leave it thirty to stop me at that number. Cannot even thank them enough for being here tonight. And so very proud of their presentation and respect, the respect that they've given me over my thirty years. And the colleagues that they have done work for that are personal friends of mine because, you know, my friends mainly are our school CFO peers who are very thankful for the work and effort that they do put into this type of work. Tomorrow morning, we'll be meeting with them. I'm not with the Hagman team tonight. We'll be with them tomorrow to explain the true mission of Greater Clark, that we are second to none. They deal with a lot of big schools. And I think that they're very aware of where we're at, where we're heading, and what is expected here. And so with my great pleasure, I would like to recommend to the board to accept on behalf of the evaluation team that the Skilman Corporation be your CMC provider for the Jeffersonville High School, new pool for Jeffersonville.
Alright, Lord, do I have a motion for the recommendation of Skilman as a CMC service provider for the new Jeffersonville High School natatorium?
Mr. President, I move that we approve Skilman as CMC.
Pleasure, Mr. Paul, appreciate that. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, or abstaining.
Please welcome Adam Seager, the Grand Department.
I guess I should've said this in the comments, but it was a very grueling process. It was very well-run, JV, you know, for facilitating that. And we were thrown away by, you know, five tremendous proposals. You know.
They made it tough ones.
They sure did, they sure did.
As you can tell, scoring, I mean, it was within just, Sydney. And it was true and it was fair. And we valued each partnership that we have here. The expectations that we have here is higher than maybe any of them has ever faced. But they're gladly, acceptably taking it all. JV's orchestrating that. We have the top two architects in the state of Indiana. So I just want you to know, to get the feeling that's in my heart, the passion that I have on where we stand now, that where's Greater Clark now is going to be throughout the state of Indiana. What you're about to experience is going to be life-changing, not just for you, but for Skilman, Greater Clark. That's the, I'm very passionate about this, so.
You got the check, but you should be. Alright, next would be the adoption amendment from the lease agreement.
So normally in our process, we're doing bond issuances for projects. You know, we call it a project, we have the plan. We start with our initial, you know, resolutions to kick that off to give it a time for the public and public hearings to hear the support on those projects. We didn't have to do that as fast this time. So normally, we're used to doing this, boom, boom, boom. Because of the nature, when we wanted to start these projects and when we actually need the money, we're timing this in such a fashion. So tonight, you will be approving a resolution that is an agreement to amend the lease. So these are lease rentals, which means that your building corporation is the holder of that and you are, that's your item that you are up there. So that way, people will sell bonds and then you pay that back, almost like a mortgage, right? So we are admitting that to include this new bond that's coming for mainly Parkwood and a high school. So the resolution tonight, purpose of this amendment is to engage with Greater Clark Building Corporation by way of amending the original lease agreement in October of twenty-eleven. Thus allowing the corporation to have premises under lease for the twenty-twenty-three borrowing that will be used for the capital plan outlined for replacement of Parkwood Elementary, J H Johnson Pool, Technology HVAC Roofing, and various general repairs in District One. You have already approved preliminary determination, which says this is what you are interested in doing. And I recommend that the board trustees approve the amendment as an approval of the amendment to the lease agreement by way of resolution as presented.
Lord, do I have a motion for the approval of the resolution approving form of the amendment to lease?
Mr. President, if I can follow that. I move that we approve the resolution approving form of amendment to lease.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Freeman, any questions, comments? I know that was kind of a tongue twister.
The only one is that come April eleventh, you will have that, the final public hearing to hear any questions, you know, somebody's saying I'll be changing, you know, amendments to the lease. So, and then you will do your final resolutions. That will position us then to tie our borrowing. We'll be able to do that and we have Matt with Stiefel to make sure of interest rates need what we're doing and we will engage our CMCs to be heavily involved with whatever budget's our at that program. So it will be a timed issue. We're looking to hopefully have funds here later than June so that way we can make sure that we receive forward those projects.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor of the approval of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Perfect, let's keep on moving. We got a wonderful roofing project in.
So in our borrowings that we're doing, our five-year capital plan, we have various things that are going on aside from these vandalizations that we need to build. There are things that we need to replace such as roofing, paving, those kinds of needs. However, we have chosen with the twenty-three money that would be coming that we're needing that you proved this amendment for, the resolutions for, there has been assessment within the district of the urgency of our roof replacements and the priority has become jet high in three sections. And so perfection handles the bids, all of the inspection, all of those things and it comes with that priority list. So I'm coming to you. things, and it comes with, with that priority with us. So I'm coming to you tonight to approve the agreement with Professor Stone with the hoofing plan at Jeffersonville High School.
Do I have a?
That doesn't take care of the whole thing. It's only sections, and it's, the size of Jeff High, it's unrealistic that we can just do them all in once, in sweep anyway. So they have put the most urgent ones at the top. That is a formal roof. We're moving away from that concept.
Board, do I have a motion for the approval of a 2023 roofing project at Jeff High?
Would we approve the roofing project at Jeff High?
Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say ayes?
Aye.
Opposed? Or abstaining? Thank you. Move right along, architect agreement, amendment between Greater Clark, Fanny Howe Associates, and design work at JHS Pool Football Locker Room.
As I alluded to earlier, that Greater Clark is so honored to have two of us architects in the state of Indiana. This agreement is between Fanny and Howe, you know, seeing some renderings, and it's just absolutely gorgeous. They also are the top pool designers in the state of Indiana. And Bill Payne, who was on target to retire because of Greater Clark, he's decided to stay home to see us do his projects. Again, that's unfortunate for him. And so he's been doing all this work, and I've been after to get his contract, to get him with us, to stay with us, you know. So I am bringing to you his contract for tonight. This is seven percent. Everybody's trying to align to give Greater Clark more bank of their money invested in the project, so this is a very fair percentage. Remember I told you that there are higher industry standards? So everybody's on board with us in how we approach this. So it is my recommendation that the board approve the amendment, agreement between GCCS and Fanny Howe Associates for the work and design of the JHS Pool slash locker room. We've seen the last renderings that he had done, that incorporated that football locker room in there, similar to Charles Town High, but adjusted. What is very impressive with that is that if we win, let me say that different, when we host the state's largest competitive swimming options in that building, you will have six locker rooms, so you can have people go back and forth. When we host large events in our football stadium, you will have six locker rooms. You will have concession that's gonna service this area. This is spectacular. This is magnificent, and I cannot wait till we start on that one. So it is my recommendation.
Board, I move that we approve the architecture agreement between Greater Clark School, Fanny Howe Associates, for the design work of the Jeffersonville High School pool and football locker room. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Any questions, comments, or concern? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Or abstaining. Final?
Thank you, Mr. Perkins.
Oh, thank you.
They show my passion.
I know it. I'm digging it. That's great. Final would be the easement right of way at Charlestown Middle School. Dr. Sherman, how are you this evening?
Good, how are you?
Having the time of my life.
I'll be over soon.
Yeah. Something else, man.
So as most of you know, Channel Lake is a pretty big addition that's going into Charlestown area. As part of that addition, they need to add drainage and utilities for that to service that. One of the areas that they have noted as a possible drainage and utilities lies on Charlestown Middle School's property. So they are requesting that the city be given that easement right of way. Chris Johnny Xway will be doing all the work on that at their, at their own expense. Additionally, since they're going to be there and just to do something for us, they're gonna demolish the fence that is on the back property line there, clean that up for us, so that way we can do something to deal with. So I'm recommending that we approve the easement right of way on Charlestown Middle School.
Board, do I have a motion for the approval of the easement right of way at Charlestown Middle School?
Mr. President, I vote that we approve the easement right of way at Charlestown Middle School.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Or abstaining. Okay, this is the wonderful time of the board where we get, besides adjournment, where we get to have board comments. Mr. Jones, would you have anything you'd like to? Thank you, sir. Ms. Hutchinson?
No.
Mr. Paul?
None, Ms. Stevens.
Ms. Mustang? Mr. Freeman?
I can't really talk today for some reason.
Okay. Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Please?
Please. This time of year, we have so many students competing and performing, and whether it's drama, or state music, or basketball, or wrestling, or, I'm probably like swimming. And I've tried to attend as many of these as I could, but didn't, of course, could get around to all of them. But I am so proud, not of the, not of the awards, or not of the trophies, I am just so proud of our students and our coaches, and our directors. Our students represented so well, and they're fine young women and men. We should be very thankful.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Perkins. I will, I have a couple things to say. I'll keep it brief, because there's no more horrible death than to be talked to death. We've all had that happen to grocery store, I'm sure. First and foremost, I wanted to thank Mrs. Gillen, the principal at UK Elementary School, and the three teachers, Ben, Curlet, Mrs. Hoyland, and Mrs. Watson. They allowed me, when I was Read Across America week, it allowed me to read to the elementary school children. I had been a school teacher for a long time, had been administrator for a long time, but I've never really had much to do with elementary school kids. It was all secondary. Now, I have grandchildren, and I love them dearly, but when I went in there to read to them, Hooray for Diffendoofer Day, it was about standardized testing, and how they were ready for it. And if they didn't pass the test, they'd have to go to dreaded flower town. And those kids kept getting closer to me and closer to me, and were just, I mean, it was just, it took my heart. And it was just everything I could do to, to just, you know, I mean, I would've done it for, every day for a month. Oddly enough, it was, I thought it was difficult with all the bids that we had and things for the construction, and I was really nervous about trying to get that right, and study that, and do the right things, and, and so that, to make the best decision I could make. But I was about equally as nervous as reading to the elementary school children. That being said, I just, I recommend it, board, if you ever get a chance, you know, and do it the way you can. Finally, I'd like to thank Laura Hubinger for all the work that you've done to facilitate where we are at this point. I know when, when you left, and I was glad that you communicated with me afterwards, because I know your, your heart was heavy, you know, you were just trying to figure all this, because you were emotionally invested as, as you were, you know, financially invested with our school system. And I know that was difficult for you, it was difficult for everyone. So, but I just wanna just really shout out, give you kudos, and thank you. And finally, I'd like to shout out to Janelle Fitzpatrick. We're, we're getting there, kiddo. So if you're listening, if not.
You know she is.
If not, yeah, yeah. Anyway, that's all. Sorry about talking so low.
I'll keep my choice. Congratulations to New Washington's boys' basketball team winning the sectional. Unfortunately, they got beaten the regional, but they still had a good run. Also, I wanna thank everybody that was on the committee, like Mr. Buck Walter said, and Laura said. It was a difficult, difficult decision on, on the projects, and Jamie did a great job of running that process, you know. That's one of the best processes I've sat through, you know, in terms of looking at all the bids, and going through the interviews, and, and really coming up with it. I think we made a great decision, you know. And now we get to work with three of the biggest, best contracting firms in the state. So, you know, how can we go wrong on that decision, I believe. So I'm thrilled to get started and get these things going. You know, we're getting one day closer to actually dirt moving, and buildings going up, and, and in two, two and a half years, seeing new facilities for our kids. So that's always a positive.
Absolutely. Ms. Barkowski, anything you'd like to add? Be sure, just smiling. Vote no. Board, do I have a motion for adjournment?
I will adjourn.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining.